Executive session, it is ten twenty-six. We've got some changes here on our green sheet here. And I want to go ahead and do a couple of these to start with. And I think there was two which there was seen to be broad agreement on, which was the Fire Marshals and Emergency Management. So I think there was some, I'd like to, the Chair will move for approval of the Emergency Management reorganization as it was related, the Chair moved for approval as it was presented. We have a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? Story ahead.
Just bring something up.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm, this one I'm fully, yes, no, I'm all good.
That's why we're doing this one first.
This one's all good.
I was going to, I thought we'd just go, it's just a matter for the public. I thought we'd go through some of these that we, that we know there was a broad consensus on, or some of those kind of housekeeping items, and then kind of get those, is that okay with y'all?
I'm very happy with this one.
And then we'll just do that, so the Chair has moved for approval with a second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, let's go to...
Judge, if I may? We will need to see if Commissioner Edmondson made a vote. Oh, I'm not sure if she's there.
Oh, let's, okay, we'll pause for a second. Stacy, can, where's Stacy? Holly, Holly, I'll get her on the phone, okay, thank you. We'll take a pause. Not a problem.
Saw Bob walking, so, so he looks like he's feeling better.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
There she is.
There she is. Commissioner, good to have you with us, we had gone in your green tab, we thought we were going to go through some items here that were in the green tab first before we got to some other items. And we were doing Emergency Management and I had made a motion and Commissioner Williams had made a second on the reorg of the Emergency Management, so we have a motion, a second, and we're willing to vote, are you available to vote? So, all in, Diane, be sure that you're unmuted, and we're going to do a vote here on Emergency Management reorganization. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, members, why don't we skip to the Fire Marshal's Office, I believe? That was broadly accepted on the Fire Marshal's Office, did anyone want to make a motion relates to that?
I'll move and we accept that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, the Chair will second, any discussion?
This is the one, sorry, this is the one I just wanted to, not...
Discuss.
Yeah, just briefly, so, especially with the addition of the Administrative Assistant. And I'm going to be jumping a little ahead, but for the, I think we have on the agenda to talk about the DPS positions. And I guess I just, and I don't know if Brad's here, but I'd just like to potentially say, if we're giving this position, that we may want to see if he could put, offer that to a DPS position person. And we can talk more about that in just a little bit, but if we decide to do that, I know we have said...
We can make sure that, make sure that those people...
There's a lot of, there's a lot of pieces to that, but I'm just trying to give, so, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about. We'll be talking about it, but if, if the court decides that we're going to unwind the DPS positions, there's three administrative support type people that we are having those positions. There's, and I'll talk more about this when we get there, but your position's very closely aligned, I think, with maybe some of the things that they might be doing. We haven't, and so I just would like to get a little, if we're going to do this for you, I guess, can we get a, kind of at least a nod? There's nothing that you will at least consider if that works, obviously if it doesn't work? What's that?
We can't just slide them in there, they'll have to apply like everyone else.
No, no, that's what I said, it's just...
Just make sure that they're aware, that's what, basically, just make sure those three and four...
I'm sure they'll, I'm sure they'll take a look at it, I'll make sure that they're aware of our, of our concerns on this, Kevin.
Yeah, I'm unaware of the DPS thing, but yes, we're always willing to jump in and help where we can do it, yeah.
Very good, that was really it.
Hi Brad, I didn't see you there.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's go to... Let me see if there was something else here. Let's go to Public Health Clinical. I'm on page two of the green tab, Commissioner, down at the bottom. This was the reclass to get the epidemiologist up to more of a market level since we've had a lot of vacancies with that, and the Chair...
Judge, can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
I know that Matt was doing something at ninety percent, and that still leaves a ten percent gap, that could be ten, twenty thousand dollars that somebody would get somewhere else. Is there any reason why we can't go ahead and ask Matt to hire that in at a grade level a little higher than put us almost a hundred percent market?
I think this is taking it from a thirteen to a fourteen, Matt, did you want to speak to that? We do have Dr. Richardson with us, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you, yes, we, this is our solution to just what you've talked about, Commissioner, which is, there was a recommended from HR for the thirteen, we want it separated by one more grade. That is still less than the average salary for that position across the metroplex, but we think with tenure, and if we were fortunate to have someone for several years with the raises that the county has been trending, we think that would be competitive. So that grade fourteen, we agree would be competitive moving forward, but we are asking for you to approve that.
Yeah, go right ahead, please.
I think it's, I think we need to make clear that the, so the ninety percent can be confusing for a lot of people. The ninety percent is what...
And it can be changed.
And that's what we're going to be working through.
Right.
The ninety percent's what the, that's the parameters that we're giving to HR at one point in time by the court of where we would like to make sure we fall. So that's why you're getting the recommendation from HR at the ninety percent. So obviously that's why Matt's here to say, well, that sounds great, but we need to be a little higher, and that gives us the option to make that decision. So I just think it's, it's not like it's a, this is the only way we do it. It's just the guidelines we gave HR originally to go by for the hiring process, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yep.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, so the Chair will move for approval on the Public Health Clinical.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Did y'all want to open up the technology, was there a, did y'all want to address? That was zero, that was zero impact, that was a zero impact, that was modifying Kevin's initial request and everything, so this is a tough one. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by...
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously, let's go to County Court. County Court Appointment of Representation, this was, we were going to be funding less out of contingency when we did this, correct?
That's correct, Judge.
Okay, so this was an amendment of seven hundred thousand, maybe less out of contingency, so, did y'all, we have a motion?
Judge, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
We were just talking about the lack of attorneys to be appointed at Latham, and I see here there is an increase, will that help the problem that we were discussing earlier? With some defendants not getting prompt?
I think, I do think that that could, I do think that that could, this could be a step in the right direction, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We did have Justice Management Division on the bottom of page four. This was the deputy over at the Health Department on the administrative campus.
Yep, move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. I'll be sure that you get in on the action, Diane, so, we have a delay there, we'll make, we'll make sure that you're appropriately acknowledged. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We did the Fire Marshal, I did some of these, let me just... Elections Administration, let's go to Elections, this is item eight, I mean, page eight, top of page eight in the green folder. Top of page eight.
Yes.
And this was to increase the pay five percent for poll workers.
Yes.
Do we want to, do we want to hold that until after we make it, I think till we make the other items, so let's hold that one. We have the jury and grand jury. Information here as well, if you see that.
Yep. And I move to approve that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, the Chair will second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay. Alejandro, will you outline the bottom of page eight, Department of Public Safety, will you discuss that briefly?
Yes, Judge. So essentially what we have here is, it's an action to reduce the general fund tax levy by two hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars, and the cost would be offset by reduction in the general fund fund balance to continue to fund those positions in FY twenty twenty-five, as well as the, the, the operating costs for that department. So it will result in a reduction in the tax levy unless you reallocate those funds towards some of these other items that you're approving as part of budget workshops.
Okay, so it's a DPS, I'll, I'll hand it off to Commissioner, I think it'd be a good time to talk about it, Kevin, let's just go ahead and do that one.
So thank you, Judge, so, and thank you, Alejandro, so, as you know, we discussed that we have three county employees essentially deployed with the Department of Public Safety, and I've had pretty extensive conversations with the executive director over all the North Texas region, Jeremy Sherrod, who's a major and basically handles all forty-two counties in North Texas, and he's been very, very helpful, I want to just be very appreciative to our, our friends over at the DPS. But we have, for, just to bring everyone up to speed, for many years, I'm not even sure how many, but it's been for decades, have funded administrative positions at the Department of Public Safety. Not quite sure what, how that got started, it was just so long ago, and many other counties that I've talked to have either never opted in, or they have kind of gotten out of that, there are still some that, that do it, but I think as we have looked at this, it basically costs us about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year is what it will cost this year. And as you know, we're struggling to try to figure out how we can get employees and even in fact other administrative support for Denton County folks, and so I think it, it makes sense, not to mention some of the potential, I worry a little bit about liabilities and other things, about having our employees in other offices where we have no, we virtually have no say over what they're doing, or what's, what their environment is like or anything else, not that it's bad at all, but I think it's just something that concerns me. So I think it makes sense for us to unwind this. What I, I think, when we talked before, I think you agreed that if we're, if we want to do that, though, we have no intention of wanting, there's three individuals, those that are county employees, I don't want them to be just out on the street essentially without a job in, in October first. And so one of the things that we've discussed was what Alejandro is, and, and talking with Jeremy, he's like, hey, they're, you know, whether they may want to stay at DPS, they don't have positions at this moment, they could just move into, but they also, I think in many cases, may want to stay with the county. I will also say that Gustavo had a conversation with the, the lead of those three, and I think that there, there will be a lot of different options on, on what, you know, but they would have time to potentially apply for positions at the county, and Alejandro and Nicole gave us, there's quite a few open positions and ones that, like we just said, we just approved some others that they might be eligible to apply for, and at the same time, they may be able to, to find positions at the DPS, but not necessarily just in the next thirty days.
So what if we, are you comfortable if we funded that fifty percent that gives them through the, halfway through the fiscal year as a head start?
Well, our, what, what, well, what, what the, what the proposal is, and I'm fine with this is, but I'm also fine with that potentially, but is that because the good news for us back to recurring and non-recurring, if we're all in agreement that we're going to unwind this and that we're, that we don't have to use our tax levy to fund that for next year, we can use some of our funds that we have, and I believe that both Jeff and Alejandro concur on this, that we could use those funds to, to have funding in the budget for next year, as much as twelve months if we wanted, it could be six months. But the contingent, they would basically be like contingency funds, assuming that we need it. Now, my guess is that we're not going to need all twelve months for all three employees, I'm quite sure we're not. So, but the good news is that just means that if we don't use all those funds, that we would, they would go, they'd be in our general fund.
Just back in the fund balance.
I'm sorry, fund balance, I'm sorry.
Fund them technically, but just pay for them out of a contingency.
Yeah, did anyone talk to those employees, did you say Gustavo?
Gustavo, yeah, Gustavo.
Commissioner Mitchell, I talked to one of them, the supervisor in DPS last week.
And?
Well, it was a surprise, but they understand. One of, the supervisor told me basically, this is my life, this is the only place I have worked, but they understand the situation.
But are they, are they willing, do, do they want to stay, come over to the county side, do you know?
I didn't really approach it that way, it's more on the, we are going to give you the opportunity to find a position in the county, either at the same level or lower level. The intent is not to cut you off tomorrow, or October first, but, I mean, it was a surprise, they were not prepared for this.
Well, I'm surprised that he had, the chupacan hadn't talked to him.
Well, it, because nothing, we haven't taken any action, right? So he, in fairness to Major Sherrod, he, he wanted to keep it quiet as well until we made some decisions about it. We, we definitely will talk individually if we decide that. I, I think we got enough information that I think if we give them some time, I think that everything would work out really well, I think just, but, but just cutting it off on October first, I think would be a bad choice.
No, right.
I don't think anybody would want to do that.
So, I, I would, I would be fine with just allocating the, the full year, but, but make it clear, and I think this is one of the things we'll have to have those conversations, that if, you know, you don't...
Say fine.
It, it's, it's, we're basically saying, let's find another position.
Yes.
But you have some time to do it, but when you, when you do find that new position, that funding stops for that, and so that, you know, the DPS wouldn't go hire another person, and they, they would understand that, and they do understand that. Like I said, Major Sherrod has been very helpful in all of this, so, and they've been, he was very complimentary for having the help, but he understands that situation that we're in very well.
Well, hopefully they can get on at the county or the other, yes, Commissioner.
If y'all remember, earlier in the year, we gave someone two months to find another position. And I realize that these people, no fault of their own, are going to be without a job, but I don't think we ought to fully fund, I think no more than forty-six months should give them plenty of time looking at all the positions that Gustavo's made us aware of, and there may be others as well. So I think we can be thoughtful for these people and still responsible with the taxpayers' money.
And I think that, I'm perfectly fine with that, the only reason, I'm, this has been a little evolving, that it was originally, I thought about the full year, is if any of them really wanted to stay at the DPS, that has, it's going to take a while, the state is, it may even require legislative action in the, in the next legislative session, not sure, I didn't get into all the depths of that. But, but that was the only reason, now it turns out, like I said, I don't know that, we don't know enough, I, I, I think we do know that at least one of them, I believe, is actually a retiree from the DPS, so probably wouldn't be going back there, so there's some, I'm not sure that's really the, the path they're going to take, but that was originally the only reason I was thinking that time, was not so much, hey, you're right, in Denton County, I think we'll have plenty of opportunities in a much shorter period, and, but, but happy, I'm really happy with either, I'm not pushing any of those.
I think we have to give them some time, Kevin, this was by no fault of their own that they're in this position that they're in, and so I think we have to give them at least six months to decide if they want to stay with the county, and then we have to visit with, have the, the major visit with DPS and the state to see how that will play out. But I think we have to give them some time, because this was...
In some ways, I see it as, we've been in this relationship for thirty years, so it's, it's about the employees, but it's also about the DPS.
Yes.
Is that, it gives them a little time to, for them to figure out what they need to do as well.
Yes.
But, but I'm open to whatever, but I, I think, I think, and by the way, like I said, it's with, from a levy perspective, it's helpful either way.
Yeah, okay, so...
So do we want to start with six months and then revisit it?
Yes, I think at least six months.
I think we, we can do either six months or a year, it doesn't matter, because at one point in time, we're going to stop this. So if we do a year and we stop it in six months, great, if we do six months and we don't get a stop in six months, we come back and have to agree to another six months, so my opinion is you do the year, and we all have the plan, and the employees are, have a good discussion with the employees, so they understand what we're trying to accomplish, and give them plenty of time to find a new avenue, and obviously push for the six months to occur. But if the state is going to take a year, and we know we need, they're going to need these positions, the state, to, to, to do the job that, that from what I understand is done, I'm assuming, maybe they don't, you know, you'll find out real quick, right? But we don't want to hinder what those three people do for the county and the state
And the state, right.
by not having those positions to a certain extent.
Right.
But we're putting the onus back where it should be, which is on the state.
Right.
Yeah, because this was just another unfunded mandate from the state, can you get right down to it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, an unfunded voluntary.
Which, which, which was great, we were, we were a great partner for, you know, twenty years or whatever it's been.
All right, so do we have a motion, do you want to make a motion, Commissioner?
I, I would move that we, that we, that we take it off the tax levy, go with the, the fund balance for the year, but I think we should revisit it in six months, and that way we have that.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Falconer and a second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Because I would just assume, go ahead and put the six months on it now, rather than having to come back to this. I think six months is plenty of time.
I think he could come back and give us, why don't you come back and give us a report at five months?
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
But it's a six month...
It's more than, because, because it's more than the county to unravel, that's the thing, we might be unraveling six months, but we don't know what the state's going to do.
That's right, give us a status report.
That's correct.
Does that work for y'all?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Judge, Commissioners, one question for clarification purposes, if somebody was to leave, the idea is that we don't allow them to hire anybody.
Right, that position is no longer funded, at that point.
They can fill it, we can't.
They can fill it on their own dime, it won't be on the county's dime.
Right, that's correct, thank you, thank you for clarifying that.
All right. You have clarity, you have clarity?
Yes, we'll just need to...
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a six-month intent, and we'll do a status check at five. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, let me see, there was other, let me just go through here real quick. All right.
Judge, I'll do the constable precinct three if you want to.
Hang on just a second.
Okay.
I'm with you, but I mean...
I'm just trying to give you one that I'll pick off.
I'm seeing, there was... Which, I don't see.
What page is that on, Brian?
Let's go to bottom of page five.
There you go.
The bottom of page five is the Constable Precinct Three. This was the new deputy constable.
Yes, sir.
And related, associated, related expenses, Commissioner Williams.
Yes, thank you, Judge. Obviously, I know there's an expense involved, anytime we add an employee, I felt that the constable did an excellent job in justifying the position. He came with the facts that I would expect anybody to come in a business situation, giving us the amount of duties... us the amount of duties that he has, the amount of papers and writs that they're doing out of that office compared to some of the others, and the amount of deputies he does or does not have. And so, with, from my opinion, is that it's actually justifiable for him to get that position, so that would be my motion. I know I haven't spoke with anybody else, but that would be my motion, is to approve the position request for precinct three.
Okay.
I'll second your motion, Ryan.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion?
I just wanted to verify that, so, I know we had some, we had the, we have the graphs on the volume and everything, is that, is, was this position among our constables, was this the one that was most needed? That's the only thing I couldn't remember.
The one that was most needed was for constable precinct six, which is the position that we included in the recommended budget.
Okay.
And precinct three was the next one.
That's, that's what, okay, very good.
Step behind it.
That's, that's what I wanted.
Great question, and that's one of the reasons that I agreed, or I agree with it, is because it was the second in line, based on.
And the other ones in, the other ones in the recommendations.
Yes, the other one has already been recommended in, well.
This was one that was not recommended, but it's next in the list.
That is correct, thank you, Judge, that is correct, specifically.
Got it.
I do believe with the growth in multifamily, et cetera, there in the, in the.
In that precinct, for sure.
In that precinct, I think this would be a catch-up, whether it's this year or next, so I would support it. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Judge, as long as we're kind of skipping around, could we look at the JP precinct one request, please? It's a small request.
Okay, Diane.
Page four, second one. If y'all remember, Judge told us, the judge of this JP court told us, that his was the only court that did not have this particular classification, and it is only a small amount of money, I think it would be fair and reasonable to do this.
All those reclassifies, I'm going to say that we need to wait until the salary survey, Diane, that's precinct one, and also the constable's also asking for reclassification.
For the clerks?
For the clerks, yeah.
So.
I'm sympathetic to it as well, but I believe we're, I believe the clerks' positions should be the first thing studied, and I hope that we do this in increments, this study. I've mentioned it before, I hope that we.
Always that coming along.
I hope that we can do that, and I think, I hope that we can do that in pieces, and I think clerks would be a great, a great.
Yeah, because our clerks are.
And I'm willing to talk about that in mid-year, I mean, if we get that, I'm willing to talk about that as appropriate.
Judge, do you mind?
Yes, please.
Yeah, no, obviously, all those positions are extremely important, and we want to take care of our employees. On those two specific ones, the justice of the precinct one, and obviously with the constable's office, this kind of rolls into what I'll be asking for again later, is the one-time pay of $4,000 would actually take care of both of those areas for a year, until we do get through our whole study and figure that out, without having to make a ongoing promise of payment, it would be, you know, it's just a one-time deal. But anyway, that's where those kind of things would really come into play, to cover those individuals that we are, and I think we are all in agreements, that we need to put those off until we do go through the study. But that four, that one-time pay would cover what these asks are for this next year. So anyway, but I do agree that we would hold off on that until after the study, and have taken, duly noted, have taken, that this would be one of the first groups that we would have to make an adjustment on our, on who we would study. And Commissioner Edmondson, we are down to the final, we have done some, our grading, if you will, so we should have an answer pretty soon with the top one or two companies that we will be recommending to the court.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I'll take it to be no action as it relates to that.
I would agree 100% that I would like to see the JP clerks in that first.
They have been on the page for a long time.
Well, and I think the clerks in general, I think.
Oh, they're, yeah, that's really.
They connect to other, JP clerks to the constables.
Yes, that's what I should have said.
There's the clerk, I mean, there's a lot of, it's a big, it's a big, broad segment of our employees, and so I think that would be, you know, we did law enforcement, we did a good job of looking at law enforcement last year and talking about that, and so, and I think working on the clerks next would be a large group of the employees.
And Judge, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to refer to purchasing real quick to see what is or isn't, or what we are or are not able to do.
In the request for proposals that we submitted, we lined out that we would start with a certain number of departments. So their pricing came in as doing it departmental-wise, the pricing didn't come in as doing it by job classification, or that would be what it would be called, right, wasn't proposed by job classification. That maybe, I need to look at the documents that we issued, to review that, to see if that's something that we can change.
Yeah, I would hope that, yeah.
Even if we did, for memo-wise, we could still.
I was just saying, we could switch departments, that's what I would say.
Make it those.
What, go ahead.
I would think so.
Yeah, well, I mean, we could.
One of the things that I'm concerned about in this survey, and I'm, you know, I've not been involved, but there's a difference in what a clerk does, let's say, in the county clerk's office, and what a clerk does in the JP's office.
Yep.
And there may be different educational requirements, there may be different certification requirements, so I think we've got to make sure that we're going to be comparing apples and apples.
No, and Commissioner, oh, Judge, I'm sorry, can I?
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner, you're absolutely right, and that's one of the things that throughout this process, that us, the group has pushed hard on, that we don't want everybody getting lumped in like it has been, they need to be broken out better.
Right.
So it's, the job descriptions are a little more specific, instead of lumped in as one big one, so we don't have what we're going through right now, and what this county has gone through, where if one group says, I just, we should have this, then you have to look at, you know, the whole group, because the job descriptions are all basically identical. So, yes, that is a heavy point of contention, if you will, that we've been asked, that we've asked for and requested and required, going through the study.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Tailoring those job descriptions is good.
So, we will do everything we possibly can, and I'll report back about making sure we can get that group involved in it. Okay, thank you, Judge.
I think that makes a logical sense, to start delineating and addressing that, it's a large group of individuals.
Yes, sir.
Let's go to the criminal district attorney.
It's right below, this was right below that on.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
What page are you on, Judge?
On page four, the third bracket down, this was their, this was their grade, pay grade ones for their increase associated with that, so, I don't know, the chair will move for approval.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussions?
I would like to have had somebody here to discuss it.
Yeah.
Would you like for us to hold this one?
Absolutely.
Okay, the chair will withdraw the motion.
I will withdraw, my second.
I don't know if they're watching. Holly, would you reach out to the district attorney's leadership and see if they would like to come speak on this today? Please, ma'am?
Yeah, I will admit, I'm disappointed that they, he didn't show up the last time, and today, there's not representation, that is.
So we can.
It is disappointing.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to go through, we're not going to do the elections right now, because it may be related to what we.
Yes.
Do as far as that goes. I would like to go to the facilities budget, as it relates to the St. John Cemetery. Well, it's, it's not a particular action item.
Is it on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
It's not an agenda, it's just a talking point.
It's an action item, I'm with you, Judge.
Just generally speaking, as we're going through and doing little decision points here, and that we amend the facilities budget to not include the maintenance of that cemetery.
Judge, do you mind if I speak?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I totally agree, you know, it's unfortunate that this is having to, it's come up this way, but we don't pay for any maintenance for any other cemeteries within the county, and obviously, we have some disgruntled individuals that come up here almost every Tuesday to tell us how bad of a job the county's doing, and all we've tried to do is help and be involved, and work with the landowners, and work with the citizens, but, you know, quite frankly, it's gotten old to have individuals come up here every week and rip into us as we're not doing a good enough job, so, you know what, I think it's right for us not to be paying for something that we don't pay for, for anybody, any other cemeteries within the, within the county, and.
We could, but we don't.
Yeah, no, we don't, and that organization, the individuals that come up here, you know, they can go do a better job than us, than I, hey, good for them, but we've tried, and all we get is negative negativity, and so, I think this will be a great way, and hopefully, once this happens, they can make their own decisions, and we won't continue to have it on.
I agree, and it's been, I think it's been an inspiration to so many, the wonderful care that has been conducted on the private sector for the Macedonia Champions Cemetery in Lewisville, and I was just talking to a group last week, and they were participants in this as a voluntary exercise of community support and maintaining cemeteries, and so, we have really, the county's operated in good faith, maintaining that in a meaningful way, and, you know, it's been continually criticized, and so, you know, it may be the county, the county can spend our resources elsewhere, and others can spend their efforts channeling community support for the maintenance thereof.
Yeah, and Judge Wright, and I've spent a lot of time on it, a lot of other, the precincts spend a lot of time on it, maintenance people spend, I mean, we've spent a.
The Office of History and Culture.
Everybody has spent a lot of time.
We've been criticized for even doing historical marker.
Right, everybody has put a lot of time into it, and unfortunately, it has not made some folks happy, and that's understandable, that is everybody's opinion, and if they decide they want to put together, you know, efforts, I would be happy to help out personally, as the commissioner that's over the, that's responsible for that area, but I totally agree with taking the funding away, and is based on, as much as anything, we do not fund any other cemetery within the county, and there's, I remember, 100 and something of them, and so.
119.
I don't think it's the responsibility of the county citizens' taxpayers to do it anymore.
Judge. And it can be, Commissioner Mitchell.
Let me, let me just jump in here, and you all know that I'm all about fairness.
Yeah, 100%.
Having been discriminated for many years, against many years, I believe in fairness, and I for one, this is not about a punishment for the individuals that have come up here, they certainly have a right to come and talk about and complain if they want to, they're citizens of Denton County, and that's their right.
They do.
But I've said all along, and I'm finally, I'm glad that we're finally saying that we can't do for one cemetery if we're not going to do for all of them, and so, I'm certainly in favor of us not doing for one cemetery if we're going to do for all of them, and obviously, we can't do for all of them, because the amount of funds that would happen, and we did have worked on the cemetery in Lewisville, Jackie Shaw got many volunteers to come out and work, and I think this is a good opportunity for people to get together and come out and do community service, but you got to get the group together to come out and do that, so, in, in effort of fairness, I believe that we should not continue to fund this cemetery if we're not going to fund the other ones.
Judge?
Excellent point, Commissioner Falconer.
And I agree 100% with what you just said, Commissioner Mitchell, I, I've said since, actually being on court, this has baffled me a little bit, because we, I'm with you, if we should do, we should be as close to being fair as we can be, you can't ever be 100%, but we should be as close, and this is one where it isn't punishment, it's just, we aren't, we aren't and really can't put that liability on our taxpayers for odd infinitum, and so, I agree with it wholeheartedly, and.
Well, we can, it's, well, I would, I would just say, we can do partnerships with people who are partnering with us.
Right.
I mean, we have statutory authority to do certain things.
No, it's not, it's not illegal, no.
Yes, correct, no, no, and I'm not challenging that, I'm just saying, but also, having a spirit of partnership on things, you know, so.
No, and Judge, you're absolutely right, and that is the deal, sometimes we're able to partnership with others, and we, you know, we do that with our charities, we don't share it among every charity, we do it with the right partnerships that work well, that we all agree are the best options for the county, and under the circumstances, unfortunately, we've tried, and this is, you're absolutely right, I'll make it clear, this is no punishment whatsoever, it's unfortunate, but it is the right thing to do, based on.
At this time.
How we're going to take care of things normally, so, I agree, Judge, so I second your motion.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I'm going through our, no, she said aye. Commissioner, your, Commissioner Edmondson, your voting was in the affirmative, correct?
Yes, I said, I voted with you, yes.
Yes.
I said aye.
Yes. Judge, verify.
I'm sorry for the delay.
No, you're, you're okay, you're, you're doing great. Okay, let's go, did we do the district clerk? Let's go to, let's hear, we do have the district clerk here, let's go to do that one. Just a second.
And also, Judge, just for clarification, I believe you all took a vote on that position earlier.
Yeah, we already did the district clerk.
Yes, but that is, that is a new appeal that we have scheduled for today.
This is a new appeal?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's go ahead and hear from them, go ahead, we're going to go back to, we're going to go to the agenda in the, in the three-ring binder.
Agenda, sorry.
We kind of knocked out these green tabs, we got most of all those done, and let's go to under.
Commissioner, that is going to be under page eight of the green, of the green folder.
Well.
Oh, sorry, back to the green folder.
It's the middle bracket of the, of page eight, it's going to be under jury and grand jury.
Which we did.
Which we did.
We did approve that.
Yeah, we approved it already.
We did that one.
Yep, we approved it.
I was, I was asking, was there anything different on this page one, on the agenda in the binder, was there anything?
The only one's going to be the district clerk, so that is a new appeal that was not included in the other previous budget work.
It was not included on the thing, so, members, if you'll go to your three-ring binder, the agenda for today, under the agenda tab, Commissioner, go to the date.
Yeah, but I was just wondering where, so Alejandra, what is the, do we have, do we have the dollar amounts on that?
Yes, sir, the dollar amounts are broken down on page eight of the green folder.
It is on it?
David, did you want to speak to this item?
Oh, that's the jury clerk, sorry.
Yes, so the district clerk is, is appealing for the, for a position that is for the jury and grand jury department, that falls under the district clerk.
So we do have the district clerk here, thank you, Mr. Trantum.
Yes, Judge, Commissioners, good morning, I guess I'm confused if it's approved or not, but if it's approved, I appreciate that, but nonetheless, this is a position I did ask for an appeal on that wasn't recommended by the. by the budget office for the grand jury and jury department that I oversee. Two thousand and one was the last time any additional staff had been allocated to that office. At that time, we had nineteen courts, I believe, in Dent County. Now, we're going to be up to twenty-eight, I think. We've become much more of a people mover than a cattle caller, I guess to say, for jury services. With that comes a lot of communication with our general public on moving them around the county as they report to JP precincts, county courts, district courts, and how we handle jury movement. Along with the constant addition of the jury scams that we have going on throughout the county. I'm sure you see the Dent County Sheriff making posts about that constantly on their Facebook page. So, we're just trying to have enough staff to handle the communication efforts with the members of our public to communicate to them, yes, our, our information that we're providing you is legit and that the scammers that you might be dealing with are, are trying to cause harm to you and, and to be aware. And so, like I said, we've become much more of a people mover in this office than, than a cattle call that we used to be. And we're just asking for the additional staff to help manage the, manage moving the public around our, our courthouses and our, our buildings as we move jurors to the county halls.
Thank you.
We did, thank you, David, you did a good outline. My question, I think, of the court broadly was, we did approve the, the, the item on page eight of nine. Was there anything on item one over here that was different from that?
No, uh, no, no, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Very good.
Yes, we do have Mr. Johnson en route, and so I think that is great. So, why don't we?
Could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, why are we not doing the elections from now? I didn't quite understand that.
Because the request was to do a five percent increase and that may be different if we do a countywide adjustment. It may deviate from that. And so, we thought we would wait.
Thank you.
To do that, so that would match anything that we do subsequently. Does that work?
Thank you, that explains it, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Why don't we take about a ten-minute recess? And we'll reconvene when Mr. Johnson gets here. We'll hear his appeal. We'll discuss the overall compensation and then we'll roll through all the tax rate stuff. Does that work for everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's take, we'll take a ten-minute recess.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Hello.
Oh, it was green. There you go. There it goes.
There we go.
There we go. All right, Commissioner, we can hear you as well, so we're reconvening for our brief break. I do want to welcome our District Attorney, Mr. Paul Johnson is with us. He was over in the grand jury, and I appreciate you coming, sir, to answer some questions of the court. Thank you for leaving your good work of the county to come visit with us this morning. If you would please outline your request, please, sir. Your mic's not on. Let's make sure that's on. There we go, Paul. There we go.
We can hear you now.
Okay. Good morning, sir. Good morning. It was still morning. Good morning.
I want to apologize if I've offended anybody on the court or to the county judge. I spoke to each and every one of you individually. Some of you have talked to multiple occasions. To do a follow-up, I sent an email to each and every one of you, kind of outlining what we do. Tuesdays is grand jury.
Yeah.
I didn't think it was necessary, but I'm apologizing. I didn't realize that you wanted me to come. I feel, now I know what it's like.
No hard feelings.
Be called into the principal's office.
You're all good. No, hey, we're all friends here. No hard feelings.
We were trying to get you out of grand jury. What are you talking about?
But mine's done secretly. This is public. All right. So basically, this is a, because some of you didn't realize this, but it's been a statewide problem with trying to get misdemeanor opening position misdemeanors filled. So much so that TDCAA has got a website where all the counties list what, you know, what they're looking for and the salaries for beginning prosecutors.
Paul, let me interrupt you right there. You didn't offend anyone, but if you're appealing something, I think you should make an appearance. And I'm sorry, I've been on the grand jury and I forgot about it, what day it was, but I'm the one that asked that you come in and do that appeal in person. I know you talk to us, including me, but I'm the one that asked that you do that appeal in person for our public.
I take your apology.
No problem.
Yeah. All right. So basically, there was, in the metroplex, starting salaries. And I was gonna say, Gustavo did a good job because we're pretty much in line with the salary survey that we did reaching out to the different DA's offices. Our beginning salary is seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Dallas County is eighty thousand dollars, three hundred and sixteen. Then Rockwall is eighty thousand, eight hundred and fifty. Now, the little tidbit to that is Rockwall County is the smallest county in the state of Texas. Just FYI, fun fact. Tarrant County is seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven. Conroe, which is outside of Houston, just to give an example, is eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars. Bottom line, we are the lowest. One of the problems that we have, because I know there was a misunderstanding, what I was looking for was ten percent total for incoming misdemeanor prosecutors. One of the, by looking at the numbers, one of the problems that we have is because there's still a shortage out there. We currently have three openings still. But October one, when all the counties are doing theirs, they're gonna slide their scale as well, which will move them even further than what we are, and that's why I was asking for ten percent. It affects eleven positions entry level misdemeanor prosecutors, all the deal. Let's see, is there anything?
Sir, do you mind, Judge, do you mind if I ask?
Go right ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, 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 go ahead.
Just to make sure that I am clear, because that is a, I know we had multiple conversations, and I appreciate it. The ten percent. So if, if this group agrees to five percent of a, for the county as a whole, you're asking for an additional five, correct?
Correct.
For ten total, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure, because I think there was some confusion of maybe it was whatever the county would get as a whole plus ten percent. But that's not what you're asking for. You're asking for ten total.
Ten percent.
Okay. Nope.
From where we're at today.
Correct.
From where we're at today.
Perfect. Thank you.
Now, you're gonna say, oh, everybody else gets sixty percent, and I'm going, oh, crap. Uh, we've got a shortage here.
No, we're, we're, we're good.
And I appreciate it, and I know you all are busy too, because trust me, trying to get with each and every one of you with our schedules, it was, was a beat down for you and us. I mean, I know you all are busy as well as I am, but I do appreciate it.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for Mr. Johnson? I think we know what, okay.
Let me make sure that I understand, Mr. Johnson, seventy-five thousand then is what each of these positions would start at? And that'll put us still below some of the others, but not as much below. Is that what I'm hearing?
Right now, and I don't have a calculator, I'm lousy at math, but if you do the ten percent, and I, I think you've got one of my letters that shows the disparity between Denton County, where the lowest paid, and everybody else. But again, I have no control over what the other counties are doing, and I'm just trying to get at least competitive. And that's kind of my objective. And like I said, and one thing, and I appreciate, because Gustavo and I were talking about it, and, you know, when they get a NeoGov, the, the applications, they send them on, but some of them that are sent on, and I get it, because we have to interview them, but some of them aren't even lawyers. And then some of them, and this is no joke, one of them shows up in his pajamas for the interview. Some of them say, hey, you know what? I'm sorry. I need more money. I thought I could get here and you would offer me a job in the felony. That's not it. We have some that are multiple individuals that keep reapplying, but we've already gone through the process, we've vetted them, and it's not a good fit. And so that's what, what I'm saying, and that's why with Gustavo, we say, hey, we got these numbers. But we haven't, we haven't been full, and I think the last, oh, was it?
While you're looking for that, what, what, what is, where are we right now? What's the starting pay now? Did you say? Seventy-three? So ten percent would be seventy, seven thousand, three hundred dollars, so it'd put us at a little over eighty thousand dollars.
Right.
As starting pay.
As starting pay.
Right.
And then, if you look at it, Dallas is still in front of us, Montgomery's still in front of us, Rockwall's kind of nick-nick with us right now. And again, they're probably gonna move their scale up too. So it's not, you know, when I'm just saying this, but I'm just eyeballing. Waukesha Hatchie, which is in the metroplex, they're still...
No, no, I just was trying to help, Commissioner Edmondson was asking what it would put us at. And that's where it would put us, is, is basically right there, in line with what they are today.
Currently.
Obviously, if there's a couple changes and somebody else, a couple of these other counties give their employees a little increase, there'll be a little difference again, but, but it won't be as significant, I don't think.
Mr. Johnson, are you concerned about the closing the gap? I, HR typically does that, tries to do a five percent spread, and so you're closing it between the ones and twos. Are you comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay. I thought you just wanted to verify that.
Yeah, thank you, Judge.
But you're not comfortable with pajamas for your...
No.
Well, you gotta draw a line somewhere, and that's crossing it.
Very good. I think we're good.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Johnson, we will, we're gonna do the, you'll hear the results later today. We're gonna do the pay plan, and then we'll see how this makes adjustments. Thank you, sir. All right. I think our...
I got some good questions to answer.
These are, I was gonna, I appreciate him coming over. Let's go to salary discussions, and let's pick up that conversation for countywide employees. I know there's been discussions about which percentage we would like to do and/or, there was discussion about a one-time payment, a bonus of some kind, so...
Judge?
Yes.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you ready to talk?
I can, you can hear, I can hear you.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I asked Gustavo for some, for some numbers, because I didn't even really know what is the average pay of a county employee right now. And believe it or not, the average salary for all active county employees, which is including elected officials, is seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. And, you know, I think that's good. I also understand, though, we're not keeping up with the inflation that our national government has caused. And so I personally would prefer to see an increase in the pay rate rather than a bonus, because to begin with, a bonus does not count at all towards the, the employee's retirement benefits. And I think it's very important, maybe it's just because of the age I am, but I think the retirement benefits are very important for our employees. So I would rather see us go up to a seven percent salary increase to, to kind of spread it out for all the employees, but then also to help their retirement benefits.
Okay, other thoughts?
That's deafening silence.
What's that?
I said, there is now a deafening silence.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I thank, thank you for their, for that. Obviously, Judge, I'm sorry.
Silence before the scream.
Judge, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Brian.
Go ahead.
Judge, okay. No, Commissioner, no, that, there was no silence for anything other than I'm sitting here doing figures and on my paper and looking at things and myself, so I, I can appreciate, and I, again, I think this is, is, I want to make sure everybody understands out in fairyland that we, we are all, we all agree to something at some point in time. We just don't always agree of how it's, we agree of something, we just have to get there. And so obviously, at the first, I was like seven percent and the four thousand stipend, but I obviously, I'm here to make sure that everybody's on the same page and that we can come to some agreement. But I, I still feel that the one-time pay is, is more beneficial than, than maybe everybody understands. But I do love your idea of the seven percent, so let me, let me say that. So let me do some thinking here and some figuring while somebody else talks.
Yeah, Judge. So, so I, I too agree with, with, with that we want, we want to, we want to do for our employees and we want to give back. One of the things that, again, we, we have, we, we're looking towards this compensation study, and I think we're gonna find that not everyone is exactly at the same point competitively, right? It just would be highly unusual to find that everyone is at the same. So as we're doing that, ultimately, we likely are going to need to provide additional funds as we find those to bring those positions up to competitive environment, to the competitive environment. And if we, if, again, I love the idea of helping out our employees, but if we go all the way to seven percent, we really are, we're gonna have to do some moving in our budget to make sure that we, because those are not, those are coming out of our levy, out of our recurring funds. And we're, just to use an analogy, we're not leaving, in my opinion, we're not leaving any powder dry. And so then, when we need to take job category A next year and make some adjustments, we will have kind of already used a lot of that, of that, that tax levy, and so it won't give us as much flexibility on being able to really adjust the positions that need to be adjusted. I, I too, I've made this very clear, am a big proponent of a one-time stipend when we have those funds available as non-recurring. And I, I use that all the time because there's such a big difference between recurring funds, which come from the, generally come from the tax levy, and non-recurring that come from a variety of sources. Oftentimes, the efficiencies of our employees do that. And to be able to basically give back some of that when we have it, and we have that available, which we, we need to spend down some of our excess fund balance, I think giving it back to the employees makes a lot of sense and, and kind of working on both sides of the equation, the non-recurring and the recurring. And so I, I, I would, I would tend to, to be on the side of let's, 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 let's give back to the employees off of what we know today, which would be off of some of our fund balance on a non-recurring. And then I still think at least the five percent, yes, that we, we've got to keep up in general, but that would be my, my, my thought.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell, did you want to go for it next or, okay. Go ahead.
Sorry.
It's okay. That's okay.
So I've done a little math, and Commissioner Edmondson, that, that was a great point you made. I didn't even think of, so I'm, which I usually look at about every number possible, but that was a great one that you asked for. So the average of seventy-one thousand per year, the four thousand dollars is approximately six percent of a person's salary. So that's a pretty, pretty nice, and I, we don't call it a bonus, it's a one-time pay. Unfortunately, we, we can't do bonuses here in, in this world that we, we're in now as far as not being in the private sector, but, so a one-time pay, and, and I agree with the...
Kevin.
With, well, I don't know. Is that your name? I was trying to come up with a different word.
We sit next to each other.
Then your name. I wasn't looking for your name, but okay, Kevin, the guy next to me. No, but I, I agree with, with the methodology that you're utilizing to come up with your, your thought process, so. But I just wanted to say thank you for that information, Commissioner Edmondson. I thought that was really good.
But I think we have a great workforce. I'm appreciative of the workforce. I get compliments on the workforce all the time. I think one of the things that the county's done a good job about is trying to stay competitive so that we attract and retain our, our wonderful workforce. I think the court has done a good job over the years in absorbing insurance increases, and so we've tried to, to keep those expenses to our workforce. And that's one of the competitive ways, is that we have great health insurance and other benefits associated. So not everything is necessarily about an hourly rate when you look at that, you know? In the past, giving a raise and then, and then absorbing, having employees absorb the insurance increase is, you know, it's been characterized by many as giving with one hand and taking with the other. So I think compensation and the benefits need to be viewed comprehensively and, and a bigger audience, and it's not just about our sister counties here. I'm, I think we need to focus on the ones in the DFW area. I think we've, you know, the court over the many years we've been on here have kind of changed viewpoints. We may not be comparing to all the other big urbanized counties compared to maybe more focusing on our local counties here in the DFW area where people would be maybe...
Judge, if I could add to what you're saying, and, and in some cases, it is in even other counties, right? In some positions.
That's what I was about to say. So, so, so there's, one is the competing with counties and then other public entities, you know, other public entities, our cities and school districts or universities. And then obviously, the private sector. There are some jobs that are very competitive with the private sector.
Exactly.
I have clear remembrance of that over the years with road and bridge truck drivers. You know, when the Barnett show was being fully explored, we were losing people. Remember that, Gustavo? We were losing people to the industry. And as the industry went away, many of them made a U-turn and came back home to the county. We welcomed them, right? And so, or they, we, road and bridge employees may want to go work for a highway contractor or other, other construction companies. Cities do less and less of their own roadwork, and so it's not as competitive with that. For all those variety of reasons, I believe in our compensation should be with our pay plan. I think it should be, and I'm not in favor at this time. I'm open, I always have an open mind, and I'm willing to, in future years, talk about a one-time payment, characterize it however you want. Lots of different terms was to say a one-time payment. I do not believe, this is my own viewpoint, I do not believe that helps us with the attraction of new people, because we do that next year and the year after, and what's the precedent for, for setting that on a recurring basis? Does that come in expectation that's unfulfilled? And then you have, and then you have a disenchanted workforce. We had an enchanted one this year and a disenchanted the next. So I think that can be, I think that, and we could go round and round about that, and that's just my own viewpoint. I mean, that's just, and I, I think, I think what the spirit of unity that the court has is that we would try to fully compensate our employees. I do believe that we have done, in a strategic manner, looked at different pay classifications, just like we did, and we were very bold, and we, we made a significant changes last year as a court on the law enforcement. So I think that that was duly needed and duly noted, and we took great pains to address that. We've done that with road and bridge over the, but we've done it with different classifications over the years. And so I think significant increases need to be done in a strategic manner, not broadly. That was just, that's just my general, that's just a general viewpoint. I don't believe, generally speaking at this time, that we're significantly below market. If you were to do, without doing a, if you're doing a shotgun approach versus a strategic approach for different jobs. And I, and I think that we've done that with different, people have requested different pay classification reassignments and so forth as jobs change, and if they're significantly below market. I do think that we need to have a philosophical conversation, and maybe not be for today, but in the future, but it could be subsequent to the budget, is where do we want to be as an organization as far, and who do we want to be looking at, you know? And I think for HR, it may, it's hard for HR to say, where do you want to be? 90%? 90% of what? And I, I, I think you just can't, you, you've got to define that by the different job classifications on law enforcement. Do we want to be 100% of other counties, or our sister law enforcement for patrol, our, our cities in the county? And so I've, I've told Gustavo over the years that we need to be, those need to be, who we're indexing to needs to be different for different classifications, right?
Judge, you know, you're right.
It's not the top seven counties or the DFW counties. Well, that might be different. We might be losing the patrol deputies to the cities, and they're not going to the other counties, because the other cities are paying them more here in the county. They don't want to move and go to another county. Go ahead.
And, you know, Judge, you're right. And, you know, we always are quick to say, this county is paying this amount, and this county is paying this amount. And that may be true, but when I say I'm comparing myself with Dallas County, with 2 million people, in Tarrant County, almost 2 million people, and I have a million people, so that means I'm serving less people than they are. So we have to take all of that into consideration when we decide we're comparing to another county. And, and be realistic. We can, we can always say that, you know, Lewis was making more than Denton.
Someone will always pay.
Somebody's always gonna say that.
Somebody's always...
But there, there are always different circumstances, and, you know, and I personally believe, and that's just me, that money is a short-term motivator, because, you know, you pay me this salary, and I'm okay with that for a year or more, but then next year, I need a little more, because my next county over is getting a little more. And I, trust me, I want to pay my employees a wonderful salary, but I have to, at the same time, weigh what I pay them according to what our taxpayers are looking at also. We have wonderful employees, we, you know, but you have to look at the big picture. You just can't look at one item of it and say, this county is paying more, because there's always something, gonna be somebody that's paying more, that's prettier, and that's fatter, fatter, and skinny, or, or whatever. So we have to take the whole picture into consideration.
Why'd you look at me when you said fatter? I think it was me. You looked at Kevin about skinnier, and looked right at me, and you said fatter. I'm like, come on, man.
All that, I, what I would recommend that we do, would, uh...
So I'm, I'm telling you that my mind is open, but it's not too wide, so don't get carried away.
So this is what I would like for us to do. It is 12 o'clock. I would like for us to take a, a, a one-hour lunch recess, and I would like for Alejandro to have time to work through what we've done, the decisions that we've made this morning, how that calculates into the tax rate. Let's make, let's come back, because the other side of this equation, and I know we're all mindful of it, but I'm gonna go ahead and state the obvious. We have to look about what the cost of goods sold and what this impact is to our taxpayer. And so let's, let's let him, let's recess till 1:00 PM.
Judge, can I ask a real quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Gustavo, could you, coming out of an old headhunter background, what, I know the sheriff's department is one that we were losing people. We had to do that one-time 14% increase. What other departments or what other classifications of people are we losing a lot of right now, or are we? Can you take the lunch hour break to get that figured out?
Okay. He can report. Why doesn't he report back?
And I'm sorry, Judge, if you don't mind. I, I think it kind of hits the point to, to everybody. And I feel that since I've been here, and I'm not saying anything behind, before that, because I wasn't here. But I feel that this, this, this court has done a phenomenal job trying to take care of its employees, try to keep retention, and attract new employees with all the amount of raises we've been able to give. That, that's a fact, and, and so, and I don't feel, even when we go through this, this study, the compensation study, I don't think that we're gonna be like so far behind, or I've, I, I absolutely don't feel that way at all. I think we're gonna be in line in a lot of places, we're gonna be ahead in some places, and there's gonna be some areas that we may have to look at making some adjustments. And this is just checking us of where we are. But I'm excited about making the changes to the job descriptions as much as anything to try, to try to help us separate these job descriptions versus having so many people lumped in to one. So, but I just want to make it clear that I in no way think that this court has not taken care of its employees. I've, you know, I think it's pretty clear. I'm a heavily employee-driven person, and that, and that's only just based on experience, what I was able to accomplish based on the people that I had. That, that's really what it amounts to, and I'm a huge employee advocate person. So, thank you, Judge.
All right. I think this is, this is good. So let's take it, let's recess till 1:00, and then we can be in, okay?
Yes, sir.
Very good.